The zoning board appeals for September 19th, 2024 to order. Roll call.
Bontrager.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Hutchinson.
Here.
Alt.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Okay, approval of the agenda for September 19th, 2024. Any deletions or additions, or do I get a motion?
This is for the agenda for today?
Yeah, agenda day. Hey, I can't read today because I have my eyes dilated, so I'm sorry.
This is the agenda for today, or the?
Yeah, agenda for today, I'm sorry.
We accept it, yep.
I second.
Okay.
Alt.
Yes.
Hutchinson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Bontrager.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll do it here. Approval of the May 16th, 2024 meetings, any, again, deletions, additions, or corrections. They're not going to get a motion.
Move to accept.
Second.
Yeah, second.
Okay.
Hutchinson.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Bontrager.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Public comments. I guess none. Public hearing. Joe.
Go for it, yeah.
Mm-hmm, up to you. I gotta turn on, look at this.
Can we get rid of the side?
Yeah, hit it right here.
Right there, yep. There we come. Okay, by the way, welcome, Ms. Hutchinson. You're the, this is your first meeting, I believe, so.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. For the benefit of the audience, my name is Jerry Adams. This is Danielle. And the way we typically formulate this is that I will make a staff presentation, after which the board, if they have any questions of me, they'll ask. And then generally speaking, the chair will open the public speaking portion of the hearing, turn it over to the applicant initially, to let them provide additional information or correct mistakes that I may have made. And then after that, typically, the public, if there's any public, they'll be invited to speak. He'll close the public speaking portion of the hearing, and then they will deliberate. And it's kind of a long PowerPoint, I apologize, but there are two variance requests. And just, you may be thinking about this. Structured the PowerPoint pretty much, we're going to cover the parking variance first, followed by the sign variance. So following the discussion on the parking variance, you may want to take up that particular variance before moving on to the sign variance. Probably be a little bit easier, and may take a little longer, but I think that might be a good way to do it. So in any case, you can decide later, and let's get going. The applicant is the Wexford Community Credit Union, and most likely, all of you know where it's located, about 1021 North Mitchell Street. And most of these, by the way, most of these, I hope, are visible. In some cases, they may not be, but we'll elaborate. Again, there are two variance applications that are coming before you. The first is a reduction of four spaces in the required number of parking spaces. For this particular site and use, the ordinance requires 32 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing 28, so for a reduction of four spaces. And then the second variance request is for a monument sign setback. The applicant is hoping to replace the existing older pole sign with a lower-designed monument-type sign, and in doing so, they're requesting a reduction of eight feet in the required setback. The ordinance requires 10 feet, they would like to be set back two feet. And with that, we will take those on. Essentially, what this is all about, the project as a whole, and again, I'm sure the applicant would like to elaborate a little later, but the credit union is proposing improvements to both the existing building and site. They're providing, for example, new building entry. They're looking at new relocated vehicular drive-through stations for cars, or for individuals that want to bank by car, so to speak. Improved circulation and parking, a new sign, and a range of site enhancements. City's very excited about what they're proposing, and I'm so glad that they've been willing to stay in the city of Cadillac. I know you won't be able to see this, but it's in your packet. Essentially, they did provide a host of information pursuant to site plans and so forth. That little green arrow you see, the reason it's on there, that's where the sign is going to be located, it's pointing to the sign. It wasn't on this particular site plan, so I just identified it for you. But we'll get into the particulars of this plan more fully. Just like to start out by just talking about a few, I didn't call them unique factors, I called them distinctive factors, because there are some unique distinctive factors about this particular site that I think are important. And first of all, and I can even go to the drawing next, here we go. Most of the interior parcels, non-corner parcels, that is, the interior parcels along Mitchell Street have one means of ingress and egress. Cars come into the site or out of the site onto Mitchell Street directly. This particular site, or the, has two, two means of what I call major or significant points of ingress and egress. Not only do they have a curb cut off Mitchell, but they also have a curb cut off Gun Street. And unlike an alley, let's say, the curb cut, or the access off Gun Street is, it's like a paved street system. And in going out and doing some field inspections, we observed that a lot of their clients do, in fact, in or off Gun Street. And that's significant, because it does eliminate a certain amount of congestion and movement on Mitchell Street. We think it's important and somewhat unique about this particular site. I'm going to go to the drawing. Another unique factor about this site that you don't see too often on Mitchell Street, on the south portion of the site, they have a rather extensive green belt, a little over 3,000 square feet. And that green belt essentially could be used for parking. City would like to see it retained, we would like to have them retain it. And again, it's, green belts are somewhat rare, particularly, green belts of this configuration and size are real limited along Mitchell Street, and if at all possible, we would like to see it retained. Something that I believe is very important about what they're proposing to do, I'm not sure how well this shows up, but if you're familiar with the site, the existing, like most financial institutions, banks, and credit unions, and many times, the drive-through facilities are located right adjacent to the main building. And you'll see by the drawing that that's the case here. The little blue cars are supposedly, are examples of cars going through the drive-through facility, and then they will go out primarily onto, in this case, under Mitchell, or go around and come out onto Gun Street. But with respect to those drive-through facilities, south of the facility, our park, is parking. And individuals who park in this location, and maybe, well, let's keep with this one. Individuals parking in this location, walking into the building, there is a bit of conflict between cars coming out of the drive-through stations and people moving back and forth through the parking area. And one of the things the redesigned facility will do, whoops, sorry, is eliminate that. Essentially, they're going to change positions. They're going to move the drive-through facilities to the south, and then replace the drive-through facilities on the north with parking, as indicated by the example here. And that will essentially eliminate that potential pedestrian vehicular conflict that we now, that they now experience. I think it's an important part, an exciting part of what they're proposing to do. The, again, the Cadillac zoning ordinance requires 32 spaces. The applicant is proposing 28, a variance of four spaces. And in the information, or provided to the zoning board of appeals, the applicant indicates that the 32 spaces, the requirement of the ordinance, essentially exceeds the parking demand that's experienced by the credit union. As I indicated, the applicant can meet their 32 spaces, but it would effectively eliminate a portion of the green belt that we would like to save. We did do, unbeknownst to the client, or unbeknownst to the applicant, I should say, we, over a period of a month, we actually went out and took parking counts. And I don't want you to think staff was just goofing off, going out taking parking counts. We did this at different times. As you know, I only work part-time here, so I did it on off days. John did it while he was driving back and forth to lunch and so forth. So a lot of these counts that we took were non-city time. I don't want the public to think we're wasting time doing parking counts. But anyways, to help identify parking demand, again, we did do a series of parking counts. We did so over a period of about a month. I know you can't read this, it's in your packet, but let's go to the next slide. Essentially, it's a table indicating the date that we were out there, the timing, the number of spaces that were occupied, and then we did some counts to determine if you had 32 spaces, how many would be occupied, how many vacant. If you had 28 spaces, how many would be occupied, how many would be vacant. And in terms of coming up with these numbers, we excluded Saturday, because Saturday, essentially Saturday, there's very, very little parking there. Most of the, the banking is done through the drive-through, and we didn't want to skew the data. So what we essentially found over that month period is that the number of spaces occupied ranged from about 29%, which, and this is based on 28 spaces, which means that you would have 20 spaces open, upwards to 75%, which meant you would have seven spaces open. On average, throughout the month, about 54% of the spaces were occupied. 15 spaces being utilized and 13 spaces open. So there was never a time when every one of the spaces was occupied. We also looked at parking turnover. Turnover refers to the frequency with which vehicles occupy a parking space. We did not calculate turnover rates, just didn't. But banks and credit unions are known to exhibit high turnover rates as clients complete their business. And what we did observe is that for, in, for the clients that utilize the bank, the offices, for example, inside, typically, they occupy the space somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 minutes or less. So there was constant, pretty much constant turnover of client spaces. And as indicated, there was never one time in which all of the spaces were occupied. As you know, the ordinance requires a series of standards that we have to look at. Some may seem to apply, some not, but we're going to go through them very quickly. We addressed, staff addressed each of these standards, and obviously, these are staff's opinion, you may differ, and that's fine, but let's go through them. The first standard deals with light and air, and we, we believe, staff believes, the loss of four spaces granting a variance will not impact the availability of light and air to adjacent properties, essentially have no impact. Number two, congestion, we feel, staff feels the variance per se will not increase traffic nor congestion in the streets. And we've already noted, one of the unique things about this site is that it retains the second, or has and will retain, a secondary access via Gun Street, actually limiting the movement and any congestion on Mitchell. Terms of public safety, variance will not increase the danger of fire or endanger public safety. And in fact, as we pointed out, the proposed site redesign is anticipated really to improve the safety of pedestrian circulation. Terms of property values, a parking variance of four spaces will not, we believe, will not diminish or impair property values within the surrounding area. We believe, in fact, the upgrading of the building and site, even if there's a loss of four spaces, will serve as a positive influence on the entire area. Terms of public health and safety, we don't believe the variance will impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or public welfare. And as we noted, the proposed site design is anticipated actually to improve the safety of pedestrian circulation. Terms of parking demand, they're asking to provide 28 spaces. As I noted, with 28 spaces, field observations over the four-week period reveal that on average, 15 spaces would have been occupied or will be occupied, and 13 spaces open. Also, I think it's important to note that banking trends tend to point to a decline in the demand for parking due primarily to two reasons. The use of online banking and drive-through stations that are done for many of the transactions. Interestingly, I was talking to my children, I have two kids and a lot of grandkids, but they haven't been inside a bank in the last four years. Everything is done via computer, and so, kind of goes along with what I'm saying right here. Terms of turnover, as I mentioned, client spaces were occupied for 15 minutes or less, resulting in their continual availability of spaces. We talked about the green belt. The variance will allow for the green belt along the south edge to be maintained. We'd really like to see that happen. And we believe that the use of this area for parking also is inconsistent with pedestrian safety issues that they're trying to, trying to resolve. And then lastly, and I know this one's tough to read, maybe, in terms of public impact, we believe the findings indicate a variance of four spaces should be, or may be granted, A, without detriment to the public good, without impairing the intent, purpose of the zoning ordinance to provide adequate parking levels, will provide for the site's visual enhancement through the retention of green space, will not be a detriment to adjoining properties, and will provide for site design eliminating the existing conflicts between pedestrian and vehicular travel. With that, I'll open it up if you have any questions. And as I indicated, you can consider this request on its own, and I think it would be easier to do so. In doing so, ultimately, have the applicant and the public speak, and then deliberate, but that's totally up to you. We can continue if you want to, but I'll stop there for the moment in case you have any questions.
I say we stop here and get this done.
I have a question for Jerry.
Go ahead.
So Jerry, the CZO 32 space requirement, is that a general requirement?
What's that, I'm sorry?
The CZO 32 space requirement is based on what?
On the zoning ordinance.
And that's for commercial buildings?
Yes, for, like, banks, lending institutions, and so forth.
Oh, it's specific to that, it's not just a general?
Fairly specific, yes.
The point I was going to make is that there's a lot more drive-through traffic than there are individual visits to a?
That's correct. Yeah, the amount of, in fact, we looked at other banks as well, and credit unions, I'm sorry. And same sort of thing is happening. Like, it's caused us to really think about maybe, as the ordinance is updated, to reduce the parking, parking requirement a little bit, because it's just not, it's not there anymore. Things are being done, as I mentioned, either through the drive-through, or a lot of it's being done online. I'm sure they can address that as well, but it's being done online.
Okay, thank you.
Good bet.
Any other questions for him? Okay, open up for public comments. Just, you know, state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Woody Isaacs. I'm from Kalamazoo. I'm the consultant working with the credit union for the site planning. I'm a professional landscape architect, and I'd like to introduce the other folks that are here supporting the project. Julie Rushing, she's the CEO of the credit union. And then over here is Nate Hebikizer, he's one of the architects who did the building design. And I'll just take a few moments to speak on this one. And by the way, in terms of background, I myself have served on a ZBA, so I understand the standards of review and so forth, the things that you'll be, be looking at. And we always try to be sensitive to the zoning. We don't like to come before the ZBA asking for variances, but we do feel that these two variances are warranted for the credit union. Jerry did a phenomenal job presenting the parking variance justification. I really don't have much to add, other than Julie in particular, and the credit union generally is also very intent on maintaining that buffer space on the south end of the property, where they have those large spruce trees that currently exist. And I would also say that, as Jerry alluded to, many of the other jurisdictions that we work in, the one space per 100 square feet that the city of Cadillac has, oftentimes it's 1 to 200, so it can be as much as half the parking that's required in other municipalities. So we did our best to, to try to achieve the 1 to 100 ratio. It just wasn't feasible, given the size of the site and the buffer spaces. And with the next variance, we'll talk some more also about the credit union's intent to beautify the Mitchell frontage by creating, again, another green belt in that area as well. So one last thing, you know, Jerry mentioned disconnecting the drive-through and moving it to the south. That's really a function of today's technology and the types of teller machines that are used. You know, back when the building was built, you had a teller who would, you know, have a drawer that would come out of the building, and you'd drop things in or use the pneumatic tubes. Everything's electronic now, so the placement of the, of the ITM canopy can be removed from the building, and that did allow us to create a much safer environment around the building, as again, Jerry alluded to in his, in his presentation. So any questions for me on this one?
I do with the parking. So the associates that are working, are they parking in the 28 spaces that are available?
Yes, they are. And, you know, the, again, the credit union is very comfortable that the 28 spaces will be adequate for the members who need to park and enter the building, as well as those, you know, employees who need to park as well. And, and again, I think Jerry's study, which we really appreciate him having done, is kind of bears that.
Our parking count, by the way, included the employees.
The employees' cars?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So the spaces that were open were after, after the employees and after the clients, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
I have a question, just out of, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I just had a question out of curiosity. So the tubes that go from the bank building to the drive-through, they're not pneumatic?
I don't believe this is not a pneumatic tube system, right?
I'm just curious how they're propelled from one end to the other.
Yeah, no, the, you know, I'm not that familiar with the technology, but I assume that those who want to make cash deposits just put it into the machine and it stores it until it's collected.
Recycles the cash.
I just, it's not really relevant, I was just curious.
No, no tubes.
No tubes, huh, okay.
How many parking spots do they currently have?
Uh, that's a good question, and one that I don't have an answer to at my fingertips.
I can probably, it's hard to tell, because the parking, some of the, some of the spots are not delineated anymore, just due to wear and tear, and most likely, the reason they haven't reserved, or reassigned it, or repainted, I should say, is because of what they're going to be doing. I would estimate, right now, it's probably about 33, 32 spaces.
I do believe, when we went through our initial zoning review of the site, it was right at that 32, that's, you know, part of the requirement.
Well, anything else for him? Okay. Anybody else has a comment for, for us? If not, we'll close it and discuss it between us. I mean, I'm a member of the union, and the only time I've seen a problem is when you got that trailer that decides to park in front of the building, takes up about five spots, then it's a problem. But hey, that's not their problem.
Is there any way in the variance that we can put something in that they get the variance provided, they keep the green belt, so that we don't give the variance, and then they could remove it later on?
You can attach the condition.
Okay.
Yeah, from that standpoint, if we force them to do the number of spots, they'd have to take it out, and that would be a bad thing.
Right, right. But I would also hate to say, yeah, we'll give you this variance, and then have them take it out anyway, which is kind of the, one of the reasons we do want to give it.
Do we have a motion, or any more, any more comments?
I did, just for your benefit, again, you don't have to use it, but if, with your permission, I did put up a possible motion on the screen for you. And basically, it says, based on the findings as detailed in the staff report, the consideration of public comment, and the board's review and analysis of the application, it was moved by, supported by, to approve, deny, the parking space variance, application of the Wexford Community Credit Union, yada, yada, for a reduction of four spaces in the required number of parking spaces. And I indicated said action subject to the following condition, if you want to make a condition, if not, will indicate none.
Can I make up? Can you go to the mic?
You're kind of cutting in and out a little bit.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My recommendation, I'm glad that you're taking these two separately, but you're still in the public hearing portion of the agenda. So my recommendation would be to hold the public hearings of both of these, and then close down the public hearing, and then go into your new business, which this would be an agenda item, since I don't, I had trouble hearing, but I don't think you amended your agenda to have two separate public hearings.
I was going to ask you, can we reopen it or not?
I would, I would probably just have the public hearing on both the issues, and then, once you go out of the public hearing, then have the discussion separately in new business, and have two separate motions on the variance. Does that seem reasonable?
Then it's okay, should I hold off on my presentation then, till after, after the public speaks? I didn't want to convolute, so to speak, there's a lot of information coming up with respect to the sign.
I thought that, you know, probably the best way to do it would be, because the public comment on the first part of the variance has already happened, correct?
Right.
So I would start your presentation on the second part of the variance on the sign, and then have public comment on that, and then shut down the public hearing, and then...
And they can handle both of it.
Okay.
If that's all right with the, we'll do it.
Is it too late for public comment?
No, I'll...
I just had one question. I'm Melissa Hanford, I own the building north of the credit union. I think that you, Mr. Nichols, gave a very good question, where, and I just had this yesterday, Tuesday. I have somebody, they come in, they pull in, and they got this great huge chipper. I, we get this all the time, and the parking and the traffic through the back is very dangerous. Well, I have, I have people zipping through there like crazy. And then that, it's, it's a big problem, which I have contemplated on putting up a green space of my own, because I own the, I own the driveway just north of the, just north of the credit union. And we have just traffic coming through there like crazy. But I think you had a very valid point, is we have these landscapers, the wood chippers, the, we have trailers, and they park not only crazy there, but then on my property as well. So I just want to, I didn't want that to get lost in the comments.
That, I mean, you can't stop that. I mean, the comment says, if you got a big, long trailer, go on the back, back where you're not paying any behind. But a lot of these people, the two of these, as you walk, 10 extra steps.
Right, right.
And I hate to use that term, but...
And I didn't know if, you know, with, with your site, you know, looking at it, if you had, you know, taken that type of vehicle... if you had, you know, taken that type of vehicle into account. Is, I mean, that's all I have to add, was that.
That's something, you'd love to both stop, but you'll never both appear a way to stop it.
No, 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 I'm not saying stop it, no, 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 no.
I mean, just try, you can get them...
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, with the site, you know, to, you know, if that's thought about as well. So, that's all I was just saying.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we'll go on the sign.
Okay, we'll do the signs. Okay, um, let me think, just say, here we go. The, on the left side of the screen, left for me at least, is the current poll sign that's existing. Essentially, you probably, it's the one you're familiar with. Poll signs tend to be extremely common all up and down Mitchell Street. And they hope to replace that poll sign with the monument sign that's located on the right side of the screen. And I think, yeah, this is not to scale, please. It is not to scale, but I just wanted to give you some idea of the comparison between the two, and I thought, well, this might be a way to do it. Essentially, want to replace the poll sign with the monument sign. I should say that the Cadillac zoning ordinance, for some reason, treats poll signs and monument signs as the same. They're all called poll signs, but it's a monument sign, the new sign. And as indicated earlier, they would like to have the sign be positioned two feet from the property line or the public right-of-way. You can see from the sidewalk, excuse me, based on the drawing. The zoning ordinance requires, as I've already indicated, the proposed sign to be set back 10 feet from the east property line, that's the Mitchell Street right-of-way. The applicant seeks a variance of eight feet, resulting in a setback of two feet. And again, the applicant can provide additional detail, but it's our understanding the variance is needed to accommodate a proposed drive, a drive-through in a parking area, proposed for the easterly portion of the site. And the driveway will function as a vehicular circulation route for movement around the building. And as we've indicated earlier, some of the new parking will actually bring clients closer to the building entry. Again, I know this is somewhat difficult to see, but you can see the red arrows. Again, cars will come in off Mitchell, and then the red arrows indicates how they will circulate around, and then either park along the way, or will head towards the drive-through stations. The little arrow, the green arrow, and the little square, green square, is an indication of approximately where the sign will be located. Again, just kind of a little bit of a blow-up, showing where the sign is proposed to be located. Should indicate the existing sign, the existing poll sign is non-conforming, as are most of the poll signs along Mitchell Street. In this particular case, we did not go out and do field measurements. We used the city's GIS, and there's a little bit of distortion, but we think they're fairly close. As a point of information, the existing poll sign doesn't meet the 10 feet either. It has a setback of about five feet at its base, a setback of about three and a half feet at the top reader board, and then a setback of nine feet from the traveled portion of Mitchell Street, which is also a non-conformity pursuant to the location of the sign. The zoning ordinance, just like the variance, the variance we looked at earlier, or the application for variance looked at earlier, the zoning ordinance has a series of sign variance review standards. They are different somewhat than the standards you just, we just went over. The ordinance, the Cadillac zoning ordinance, has a very specific set of standards when reviewing requests for sign variances. Again, we're going to go through these. The first standard, and you'll see, some will apply, some may not, but nonetheless, we're going to go through them rather quickly. The first standard is the fact that other larger signs constructed under prior ordinances shall not be sufficient reason to declare hardship nor practical difficulty. This standard has been meant, the applicant is not requesting an increase in the size of the sign, so the standard actually doesn't even apply. Second standard is the applicant shall not create the hardship or practical difficulty resulting in the need for the variance. I want to start out by indicating, as I already did real quickly, the sign reduces the degree, actually, of non-conformity over the existing sign. While it would have one degree of non-conformity if you issue a variance, in that it would, the setback would not be consistent with the ordinance requirements. The current poll sign has three such setback non-conformities. So there would be an improvement from that respect. Secondly, as the applicant mentioned earlier, in making their presentation, this is a pre-existing site with a pre-existing building, pre-existing curb cuts, approved some time ago by the Michigan Department of Transportation. The street, over the years, has been somewhat modified, widened a little bit. Sidewalks have been added and so forth. So, the site, there's not a lot they can do with the site, other than tearing the building down and starting over, and that's not what we're suggesting, okay? A lot of the features, a lot of the amenities are in place and have to be dealt with. And when they were put into place, they were conforming, except for the sign, perhaps. The next standard is that the applicant shall not create the hardship or practical difficulty resulting in the need of the variance. I've already really talked about the pre-existing site features, such as the Mitchell Street entry drive, the existing building location, the need for the circulation lane around the building, et cetera, et cetera. Limit the availability or the options to really modify the site much, or to create a site which will allow them to meet all of the standards of the ordinance. Number four talks about the applicant preparing or furnishing the various site drawings, construction drawings and so forth that are needed with respect to the project. They have done that. We've included some of those in your app, in your report, but they are on file at the city. The term hardship shall not, this is the fifth standard, the term hardship shall not be deemed financial hardship. I don't really need to read the rest of that, because the applicant's not claiming a financial hardship with respect to asking for this variance, so that standard also has been met. The hardships and practical difficulties must include more than inconvenience or inability to attain a higher financial return. Essentially, the applicant merely wishes to replace an existing non-controlling sign with a modern sign, consistent with the proposed site and building improvements, and he has not indicated a need due to inconvenience or to attain, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, a higher financial return. So again, this particular standard has been met. Seventh, the variance will result in justice, public benefits, reduction in hardships, and not negatively impact the rights of others. Our finding, no other properties will be affected with respect to this sign variance. The sign replaces an existing non-conforming sign. The sign has been positioned to provide opportunity for the placement of a vehicular circulation lane and associated client parking. And lastly, monument signs are consistent, by the way, with sign types that are desired for the city, for the Mitchell Street corridor. I think that's important. As new developments, or as sites are being redeveloped, you're going to see more and more monument signs. It's something the city prefers, would like. It markedly improves the aesthetics of the corridor, or will improve, I should say, the aesthetics of the corridor. And they fit much more closely with the buildings that are being designed or rehabbed. And also, they don't interfere with the, unfortunately, with the overhead power lines that unfortunately are so common along Mitchell Street. A question that I thought might come up, and it's in your packet as well, is what about clear vision? If we allow a setback variance, or a setback, if we allow the variance which reduces a setback, is that going to result in a clear vision issue? The ordinance has a clear vision section that's mostly associated with fencing, but we apply it to situations like this. And this is not a corner lot, which is where typically where the clear vision zone standards apply. But what we did is, we applied those standards to the driveway on Mitchell Street, and we, instead of applying it all the way to Mitchell Street, we even pulled it back to make it a little more stringent. I'm not sure that's, I can explain that that well. But anyways, we took the standard, and as you can see, the standard requires a clear vision zone in that red triangular area. And the sign they're proposing, the placement of the sign is north of that. It's in the green space that you see on the drawing. So they're well outside of the clear vision zone. That clear vision zone will have landscaping ultimately, and pavement, but it'll be grass. So there won't be trees, for example, fencing, et cetera, et cetera. So that should remedy questions, hopefully, regarding, are they going to impact the clear vision zone? Staff does have a maintenance concern. We did express this, by the way, to the applicant. We get snow once in a while, I think, as most of you know. And as a result of our snow levels, the sidewalk that is along Mitchell Street is periodically cleared, as is, of course, Mitchell Street. And I talked to the Public Works Department, Ken. The snow is removed from the sidewalk using a V plow and a blower, and the snow is removed from Mitchell Street by much larger equipment, having the potential to propel snow and potentially rock significant distances. And so, that is a concern, and I'll be talking about it a little more in just a few minutes regarding a possible condition. Also, staff, if possible, would like to see the sign set back a little further. I don't know if that's possible, but it would be more consistent with the existing poll sign that's there now, at least at its base. Perhaps it can be accomplished, the reduction in the size or the design of the sign, or perhaps the sign could be moved further north, where there's a wider green belt area, and maybe it could be set back. And I realize there are issues to these. For example, moving the sign takes it away from the driveway. And typically, businesses like to have the signs close to the driveway, because it's easier than for clients, customers, to know where to pull in. But just some thoughts. If a variance is approved, regardless of size, it is recommended that you attach a condition of approval requiring the developer, the applicant, I should say, to waive any claims against the city or other public body for damage caused by snow removal in the public right-of-way. And that we put that condition in the form of a recorded instrument that's binding on future owners as well. And I've talked to the city attorney, and they can prepare the instrument. We would want them to prepare the instrument. But it's just something to basically indicate and make sure people understand that if we're cleaning the sidewalk, or if we're cleaning the street, and a rock happens to get thrown, and the sign is broken, it's not our fault, because you wanted it closer. That ends my presentation, unless you have any questions.
Anybody got questions?
Again, I think the applicant can probably, Woody can probably address most of everything I've talked about.
I'll open up the public part of it.
I had one question, sorry, for Jerry.
Okay, sure.
So you mentioned there were three aspects of current non-conformity with the, or non-conformity with the current sign. What were they?
The current sign, the height of the sign, it should be set back further. Current ordinance says that a sign can be no closer to the traveled portion of Mitchell Street than its height. In other words, if the sign, the sign's not going to fall. But if it were to fall, theoretically, I guess, when the ordinance was written, they don't want it falling into Mitchell Street.
Got it.
It's not, I don't know the exact height of the sign, but I can assure you, it's not set back far enough. And then the two reader boards, the top reader board, I'm sorry, the reader board, yes. The top reader board is set back only about three and a half, or, yeah, three and a half feet or so from the right-of-way, should be 10 feet, so it's non-conforming. And then the pole itself is set back only about five feet. It should be set back 10 feet. So the entire sign is essentially non-conforming in a number of ways. Again, I will say, if you were to go up and down Mitchell, you would find that most of the poll signs are non-conforming. Most of them have been around for decades, and so I, and I, I may be old as decades, but I wasn't around here decades ago, so I can't tell you why, or just exactly what happened. But I think a lot of it had to do with just the improvements provided to Mitchell Street over the years, the widening, the sidewalks, and so forth, and other such factors.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we're closing.
Well, thank you again. Again, Jerry did a great job with his presentation. I don't have a whole lot to add, but I would like to distribute a graphical image that we've created, because just pass those around amongst yourselves. This is a scale image of, there you go, you got multiples. This is a scale image of the new conditions at the credit union. You can see the new sign on the right-hand side. Again, the intent of our client is to very much upgrade, beautify their site, add landscaping around the building, as you see in the image, and again, increase the safety with the things that we're doing, you know, with the paving, drive-through, and so forth. So we wanted to share that. Some of the points that Jerry raised, you know, making the sign smaller, or modifying it somehow, relocating it. It's already pretty small in that space. We don't think it would be effective to make it any smaller. It wouldn't be able to carry the branding, you know, provide that monument that we're looking for. So we really don't see that as a feasible option. And then, the practical difficulty, really to kind of get to the crux of the argument, the practical difficulty really is having to maintain a one-way driveway and parking to satisfy the parking ordinance, and to be able to service the members who need to park, you know, in proximity to the building with an existing building and existing sidewalk and street. You know, there's only so much space. So those are the practical difficulties we have in doing so. I guess the other argument we would put forward is, you know, as mentioned, there is a sign there now. We simply want to maintain a sign in that location while making it nicer, keeping it so that the existing members, you know, that look for a sign in that location, see a sign in that location, again, moving it further north or some other place on the site just isn't going to achieve not only the identity, the wayfinding, but also the connectivity to the building. It's really centered up on the center of the building, and really, that's where the credit union would like it to stay. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
Can you rotate the sign 90 degrees, so that you get more? Because from what I understand, the sign is over seven feet tall, and that's going to kind of limit vision for someone pulling out of that driveway if you get it even closer than what the poles are right now.
Yeah, again, you know, I think Jerry did a fine job talking about the, you know, the site triangle. We wouldn't want to rotate it to be parallel to the street, because again, you know, the visual impact of that would not be, you know, wouldn't... wouldn't work for people coming north and south on Mitchell as nearly as well as having it perpendicular to the street. And again, you know, the site triangles, site distance issues, it's not going to be an impact of somebody that's sitting at the driveway that's south looking north to look for traffic. It's just not going to be an impact for.
Because I've visited the site and where that pole is, I'm assuming is five feet right now. And if you're putting it three feet closer, that's really going to limit someone's vision especially, because with the pole sign, you can look in between the poles and see stuff. With that, where it's just a big block, that really does cut down on a person's vision, especially when it's moved closer to the road even.
Sure, I understand your point. It's a valid point. But from a technical standpoint of the clear vision, site triangles and so forth, we're meeting the standards with this placement, so.
Any other questions? Anybody else like to make comments? If not, we'll close this portion and do our hard time. Got any comments or questions or?
I'm concerned about the sight line, as you are, being close to the ground. And it's not that far away from the driveway by the looks of it. I don't see why it couldn't be moved a smidge further north.
Actually, you know, the big thing is it does fit the clear vision area.
Is there a, can I talk to Jerry?
Yeah.
So Jerry, is there a clear vision specification or requirement that we need to meet?
Let me see if I can bring this back up.
I don't know if it's me getting older or not, but those concern me more and more, clear vision from the corner.
The ordinance essentially establishes a clear vision dimension. Essentially, it's 25 feet, in this case, along the red line that's parallel to Mitchell Street and 25 feet back towards, off Mitchell Street back. You draw those two lines and you connect them, that creates the triangle. And within that triangle, you need to, it needs to be clear so that traffic pulling out can see oncoming, whether it's a bicycle or somebody walking, or whether it's a car. They're further back than the 25 feet. They meet the clear vision zone standard much more fully than they have to.
And that's by ordinance or design standard or what, Jerry?
Pardon?
Is that by ordinance or design?
It's in the zoning ordinance. Actually, we could have, because the sidewalk is there, they actually have a little bit bigger tri, or not bigger triangle, but they have a better clear vision than some corner locations, for example, because that sidewalk is also open. It's not as though they're putting a fence, you know, right up there and so forth. So it meets the ordinance, the clear vision. If it didn't meet the ordinance, we would have, well, we wouldn't have let them do it.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other comments, questions or anything? If not, we start out with the parking space first, right?
Pardon?
For this, do the.
The motion.
Motions.
I'm sorry.
Motions for to start out with the parking.
Well, yes, oh, the motion, yes. Let me, let me find it. Here we go. Of course, you don't have to follow this one. There's the, there was a possible format that you could use.
Okay, do we have a motion? I can't make one, so.
I will make the motion to accept that, but with the condition of leaving the green space.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, so the motion as we understand it, based on the findings, is indicated is to approve the setback variance as requ, I'm sorry, the parking variance as requested, subject to the condition that they retain the green belt that's along the south side of the site.
Correct.
Is that, you understand, okay.
Yeah, I just would want to be clear about the south, you know, existing south green belt, yeah.
Ann, are you good with that motion?
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay.
I couldn't hear very well, but I think the motion that I think was originally read during the public hearing where it's clear that your decision is based on the report and the comments and everything at the public hearing, was that all wrapped in it?
Yes.
Okay. I'm fine with that then.
We're going to roll call, Alt?
Yes.
Hutchinson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bontrager?
Yes.
Okay, that portion has been approved. Now we'll go the second one.
Let me go to this one. Okay, again, let me read this. Based on the findings, as detailed in the staff report, this is a possible motion though. The consideration of public comment and the boards review and analysis of the application, it was moved by, supported by, to approve or deny the monument sign varying request of the Wexford Community Credit Union, 1021 North Mitchell Street for a reduction of eight feet or whatever you decide in the required sign setback from the east property line, which is the Mitchell Street right of way, resulting in a sign setback of two feet or whatever's decided from the street right of way, said action subject to the following condition, whoops, if any. And again, we would, if you do approve a variance, whatever it might be, we would recommend that you approve it subject to the condition that the, that an instrument be prepared by the city attorney, which requiring the developer to waive any claims against the city or other public body for damage caused by snow removal from the public right of way. We just want to make sure that if we're clearing the sidewalk, for example, and a stone gets thrown by the plow and happens to break the sign somehow, that they're not going to turn, and I'm sure you wouldn't, but they're not going to turn around and say, no, you owe us 10,000 or 20,000 or whatever, whatever the sign cost. Just a thought for your consideration.
All right, another question for you, Jerry?
Yes.
So the sign itself, there's, there are sign ordinances that talk to what the sign is and what it's made out of and how light it is and all that stuff? That's all been going?
There are limits on the sign size. It means that there is, in case the question is asked, the foundation portion of the sign is not necessarily included always in the size of the sign. And the ordinance gives some latitude recognizing that if you included the base of a sign, you probably, well, you wouldn't be able to build many, at least monument signs. And the fact that we get snow, you want people to put the sign up on a base a little bit. Otherwise, half of the sign or a portion of the sign would be covered during winter time, so.
But all those other aspects of the sign, they're handled under this. It looks like it's an LED sign, perhaps?
Pardon?
It looks like it's got LED screen on it or is?
Yeah.
So it meets brightness ordinances and all that?
Meets with the ordinances.
Okay, because there's nothing worse than one of those bright LED signs. Meets all that.
Sign itself meets, other than the setback.
Just wanted to make sure that was covered somewhere else.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
And we'll say this, it does, and the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but at least four of you need to, if you're going to authorize a variance, let's say at least four of you will have to vote in favor of that because it takes a majority of the full board. Is that correct, Ann?
Yeah, I'll have to look at that typically, it's, I'll look what your ordinance says. Is there, is there a question that's not going to be? Because I can look at.
We are, we have a seven-member board, but right now we're, we lack two members.
Oh, well typically, I have to look at the statute it says, but typically it's a quorum of the people there.
Okay, that'd be great, okay.
Well, do you want me to look before you vote? Is there, I mean, because if all, if the path is five to zero, then we don't have a problem. But if the path is three to five, I'd want to take a look at that.
Okay, and there is a quorum, fine.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I have, I make the motion that we approve the.
With the two.
With all the technicalities that Jerry's had.
All the caveats and everything, yeah.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay.
Just so we understand the motion, I want to make sure because we need to record this. It's recommended, let me get back to my, there you go, okay. Based on the findings as detailed in the staff report, the consideration of public comment and the boards review and analysis of the application, it was moved by, supported by, to approve the monument sign variance request of the Wexford Community Credit Union, 1021 North Mitchell Street for a reduction of eight feet and the required sign setback from the east property line, the Mitchell Street right of way, resulting in a sign setback of two feet from said right of way, said action subject to the following condition. And that condition, my wording I guess, is that the city attorney will draw up, will draft an instrument for signature by the applicant to waive any claims against the city or other public body, the other public body being the county road commission and MDOT, quite frankly, for damage caused by snow removal in the public right of way. And that that condition be recorded, as I noted, in an instrument, and it will be binding on future owners as well. Not that we ever want to see you go away.
Thank you.
It's just that it does look like there's four members that point your ordinance. Is that what you understood?
Yes.
Okay.
Did have a second, right?
Yeah, yeah, I seconded.
Are we going to do a roll call vote for that? Bontrager?
Moved by Bontrager.
Right, we're doing.
You get to vote.
Vote for.
Oh, yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Hutchinson?
No.
Alt?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
So it's, a vote was three to two. So what, what's the decision?
The ordinance says a concurrent vote of four members of the board shall be necessary to reverse any order requirements, decision or determination of a BILLY inspector or decide in favor of applicant on any matter which is authorized by this chapter to render a decision.
I think ZBA is under state statute though, correct?
Yeah, that's the ordinance. Hang on one second. Let me look up one thing.
She's looking it up. I can see it.
Uh huh.
This is Spencer's killing.
You too?
I'm kind of concerned about the sight line myself. He said he hates.
I'm sorry, just a second.
Hmm?
Is it worth the discussion, one has to see what would take to turn no votes into yes votes?
Not right now. Really can't.
My apologies for the delay. I wanted to be absolutely right about this. You need four votes, so you need a majority of the, of the members.
You need, you need a majority of the full board, so you need four votes to approve the variance. A question for you. Can they continue to consider this in terms of a lesser variance or something else? For the evening?
You mean and then vote again?
The lesser variance would be, I mean, that would be up to the applicant to file a different.
Okay, okay.
I think there's that point, Jerry. It's lesser variance or what conditions may we additionally put on which would allow more members to vote yes?
Can we do that or no?
They want to know if, can they redis- discuss this? There may be some conditions that would get the four votes, possibly, maybe not, with the attachment of some additional conditions.
What would those be?
That I don't know.
So I know that both Kelly and I, we want to see five foot, set right in the place where the sign is now.
Two of them would like to see five feet, a variance of five feet. That might, I'm not, I can't speak for them, but that might get approval, but it's not what the applicant has requested. But could they as a ZBA authorize a variance of five feet? It would then be obviously up to the applicant to make the determination, is that going to work or not, or do I want to come back or whatever?
Kind of careful because, you know, once a decision's made, the. Kind of careful because, you know, once a decision's made, there's often conditions about coming back.
Okay.
So, um.
Jerry, I, this is very unusual, but can I just ask a, or can you ask a question?
May, may the, can the applicant ask you a question?
Yeah.
Sure.
So, I'm reading the plain language of the ordinance section that describes a concurring vote of four members. That's predicated on there being seven members present for a majority.
Right.
I'm seeing a no already.
Well, no, the, the board, the board is allowed, if, if a quorum of board is here, they're allowed to act.
Right, but I guess my question's different, the, as I'm reading the ordinance, the language says four members, but that's four of seven, that's a majority of seven. We have a majority of five. But lies that not a binding decision?
So I understand that the state, the state zoning statute for a non-use variance requires, a majority of the full board membership.
I see.
And so we have a full board membership of seven, even though we, we don't have seven members, two of them we have, they just not filled. They've resigned and so forth. So we then, a majority of the full board membership are four votes, or four people, four votes. Okay. Well, they'll need to take this under advisement and the applicant and see what they want to do.
Yeah, they might have to come back to ZBA.
Right, right, okay. Very good.
You guys are always welcome to obviously, so.
Okay? Okay, so that particular variance has been denied, okay?
And is it worth talking about, again, the aspects that concern us so that they can.
What I'd like to do though, if it's going to be denied, I, the, there should be a motion. Well, the variance to approve was not approved.
Well, the variance wasn't approved, put it that way.
Yeah.
The variance was not approved. Because it did not receive the four votes.
But I think we owe it to the applicants to give them an indication what it would take to get enough votes to move forward. Whether that's allowed or not, I don't know, but it seems to make sense.
I don't, you can't.
Can't.
I mean, I think just by listening to you, they have an idea.
I mean, you certainly could talk under like board member comments, but there wouldn't be anything that you guys could do tonight to, to motion to.
No, I'm not saying tonight, I'm just to give them some input so they can come back with something.
And they have heard what, what two of the, uh, board members might consider.
I mean, what I see, the, where it comes in the, uh, the, the north end, the grass, that area kicks out. It comes, makes a kind of a curve like this.
Yeah.
Why not put the sign in there and you can move farther off it?
That, that's been discussed, um, but again, for the reasons I stated, that they want the sign in its current position.
This is one of the things that, you're probably going to have to move it a little bit. Oh, well.
Sounds like that's the input.
Yeah, I guess we continue on.
Jerry, may I say something? Um, there will be a turn for a public comment here before we're done, we'll move on with the agenda.
Any new business? Nope, any old business?
No.
Uh, board member comments? I made mine. Plowwick comments? Just take your name and address, please.
Address, Julie Rushing, two oh six East Chapin.
Okay.
I just wanted to be clear that we would be happy to move the sign back, except that it will cause there to not be room for traffic. So it's not a sticking point, other than if we move it back, we can't use that space for through, through driving. So we'll move it as far back as it can go, but we need to be able to drive through there.
Well, like I said, also if you move that, that in north end, a little, you know, where the entrance is, you have a lot more room to move it back and still create your, yes, it won't be in the middle of your business, but it'll be read entry to the, uh, your parking lot.
Where are you speaking?
Does that make sense?
It, yeah, it, it does, you know.
Yeah, see, that's.
Yeah, there's more width, there's.
Yeah, it's probably looks like, if you look at it, probably about four or five feet. No, put it, put it.
No, I got that, I'm saying you can take some, I don't know if this is an island or what, but you can dig that up and.
No, you, we don't have to take it off, you put it there and you got, that's already. It's just not in the middle of.
And that's where our property is. So it would be on the, the edge of the property line.
Yeah, it really wouldn't, but, yeah, we could hold the ten feet from that property line and ten feet from that property line and put it right in.
I mean, like I said, it's not in the center of the building, but.
I just, I just wanted to be sure that it wasn't about aesthetics or anything like that, it's so that traffic can flow, that's all.
And it connects, so the clear, clear view vision is. Okay. Any other more comments?
I just have a question, excuse me, um, is the diagram of the site available? Cause I see that there's, it says the application is available to be reviewed, but I don't know if the, the, the site plan is.
Can I give it?
Is that a public?
Yeah, so for them to submit their application, they were required to.
Oh.
So, yes, that is part of the application.
And then that would be here, just here?
If you could let us know, are you wanting a copy?
I don't, I just want to view it, that's all, and I can come in. Yeah, yeah, cause, uh, like, they are, I'm planning, I mean, my pockets aren't as deep.
Yeah, we've, I think I've chatted with you.
I think, yes, and, you know, I do, you know, I have done a lot of work on that building. Unfortunately, I have the ugliest signs. I don't know, maybe that's a thing, I have the ugliest signs in the.
No, 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 no.
But I do, uh, you know, I, I do, that was another reason why I came was to see what it all entails, uh, stuff like that and to get some information.
Great, we like to have the public come.
Any more comments? If not, we're adjourned.
Well, this will probably be my last meeting.